So we're going to talk about all these steps and I personally am not a fan of having agenda slides read to me, so I'll let you take it in for a moment and we'll continue. Okay, so the biggest thing that we wanted to incorporate as we're trying to learn in depth about the Department of Public Works and its facilities is taking into account the people who are working there, the people who are managing there, and the people who are representing the population that's served by the Department of Public Works. So as you can see, in fact, several people in this room were present for this charrette or focus group, but one of the first things that we wanted to do is build off of the foundation that we created with the facility condition assessment and add to a deep dive on the public works yards, talking to, getting the ground level perspectives from the people who are there day in and day out, people who are managing them, learning what the concerns and issues are, learning at a strategic level from city leaders what the needs of the population are and what, from their perspective as your representative of the population, what your constituents' concerns are about public work services and how that can be impacted by the yards. So the first thing I want to talk about is why action is needed, why it's no longer going to be a suitable course of action to continue leaving the yards the way they are. I think one of the things that came up is that everyone is anticipating population growth for a variety of reasons. It could just be because of rural/urban migration, it could be because of things like the rebranding campaign where we're expecting and hoping for people to come to West Alice for commerce and to live and for schools. And with that comes increased through traffic, even if the population growth itself doesn't contribute to an increased burden on public works, there's more and more people coming through West Alice on their way into Milwaukee. And then all of those things together, along with the growing needs of everything that's on the shoulders of the Public Works Department, means that the strain is going to continue to increase for those employees. So if I was to lump all of the issues and concerns that we uncovered and learned about during this process into three major areas, it would be these three areas. This idea of fragmented operations means that you have multiple divisions within the Department of Public Works on different parts of the building who could benefit from some collaboration, who could benefit from having co-located bench stock and inventory locations, and you have employees who have to run from one end of the yard to the other end to do part of their job, to do a task that happens multiple times a day, so there's some inefficiency there. The center idea that says poor conditions, IAQ stands for indoor air quality and comfort. To be very blunt, the buildings are starting to show their age, right? The earliest section of the public works facilities is quite frankly a World War II era piece of construction, and a lot of the equipment that has been renovated over the last few decades is itself beginning to show age. And so everything from how the employees feel walking into the building, to the air that they're breathing, to equipment starting to age and degrade, further degrade, those conditions that I just mentioned go into this idea of poor conditions and air quality and comfort. And then the last thing is actually kind of a good thing, the fact that the facilities are inadequate is due to the fact that the population that you're serving is growing, the abilities of the staff are outstripping what the facilities allow them to do, and the hard work that the Department of Public Works is putting in frankly needs more space in order to do their jobs well. And so a simple example is when the maintenance bays that are in the public works facilities were designed, they were designed for vehicles, fire department vehicles, other maintenance vehicles that were just quite a bit smaller when the building was built. And so that adds some inefficiencies that we're going to talk about in a little bit. Welcome, Mayor Devine. So I'm going to again talk briefly, the reason I wanted to put up this kind of floor plan, if you will, is just to show you how many types of activities and how many divisions and teams are packed into this public works yard. And it's a little hard to read, but it shows the square footage is associated with them. And again, it's kind of hard to see, it might be easier to see in your packets there, but those green lines are turning radii for vehicles as they would like to be coming in and out of maintenance bays in the garage, that doesn't work very well. And so moving on, this is what that looks like from a bit more of a satellite view. So the circles are trying to highlight areas of pretty intense congestion around equipment storage, especially outdoor equipment and vehicle storage. Those dashed arrows are showing where vehicles are trying to maneuver around all of the equipment that's stored. And then what I really want to draw your attention to is this spot right here where you have a combination of the public solid waste and yard waste drop-off, very close in very close proximity to the refueling station for the public works employees, and also very close to the only entrance and exit for public coming in and out of there, which is also used heavily by the public works employees themselves. So hopefully this gives you a picture of, to kind of illuminate what I said earlier, the staff and their tasks and their jobs are outgrowing the facility itself. Sorry, that's just kind of a close-up to show, you've got everything from plow blades that are really shoved back in and out, granted they look nice and orderly, but the question that came to my mind immediately when I saw that is, how easy can it be to get to those who are trying to do plow operations for the city, just as one example. The next couple pictures are just trying to show that, you know, I assume that originally this was probably meant to have two vehicles going up and down it on either side of the building there, but the problem is that there's not room to store all those vehicles inside, and so now there's outdoor parking, which reduces the ability for public works vehicles to circulate and circulate safely, which again leads to lags in service delivery and the ability to get in and out of the yard areas. This is another picture of that same side. I would like to tell you that these are vehicles that are transiting, but that's not where the entrance is, those are again double parked vehicles. And so my intent is not to say, oh, you know, the public works employees are not being careful with their parking, far from it, it's the only space they have. So that is hampering their ability to do their job as well as they would like to and as well as they're capable of. I'll breeze through this quickly, as you can see, the point is as is stated there, there's very few openings, and even fewer that the public is able to use because they're also used by public works employees. And so this, as you can see, is right by that area that I highlighted on the overhead shot earlier, where there's a ton of congestion. This is where the public and employees are coming in, yard waste drop-off, the fuel stations, back around the other side of the bays, and then this is the only exit for the public on that same street side. Started, I'll pause for a moment if there's any to ask, if there's questions, and then I'll move on to what's inside the building. Just taking it in, wonderful. So there are, as I mentioned, there are more pictures in the Word document that's printed in there than are in this publication or that are in this presentation, so please reference those as well as we're going through. But the idea, as I've mentioned a little bit earlier, is the building is small for the amount of services that are provided out of it. The infrastructure is getting old, you may recognize some of these as being kind of best-in-class new hand washing stations in the bathrooms from 30 or 40 years ago. You know, you can't really see it well in this picture, but those lockers are starting to rust out on the bottom. That bottom right picture is a kind of combination locker room, gear room, meeting room, team room, lunch room. The question just becomes, is this where you would want to work if you were in the Department of Public Works? Again, the idea that not just the building itself and the lockers and walls and tables and chairs that are in it are aging, but also the equipment that's in it is aging. There is a lot of electrical infrastructure and HVAC infrastructure in the public works facilities that was installed in the 70s. And I'm sure, sure that that's not really serving the space it was designed to serve as well as it could be. This is to highlight those top two pictures especially, or as I mentioned before, the inventory system. You've got inventory that's spread out over multiple locations within a large building. And I know that the Department of Public Works is working on an inventory management system, but the bottom line is that is something that needs to be streamlined to save a lot of time and money. I know that employees told us that they're filling out hand paperwork to sign out for equipment and parts, and that's just, to be blunt, not acceptable in 2018, and we can save a lot of time by fixing that. Again, we already talked about this, so I won't belabor the point, but so little room inside that a lot of equipment is having a much rapidly, is degrading and decaying a lot more rapidly than it would if it was stored properly or stored inside, I should say. Okay, I'm going to hand off to Ryan who's going to talk about some industry best practices for public works facilities. And before I do, any questions about current conditions of the facilities or issues that we uncovered looking and talking? Sir?
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. You had mentioned that there are only three access points, two are one-way, that's, you know, the in and then the out from the dump. And then another access point for the DPW employees, which is two-way. And then you made it sound like it was a problem with the public mixing with the staff and our vehicles. I've never seen a congestion issue or anything with our customers or with our employees within the yards themselves.
Yeah, I'm sorry if I was unclear, something that came up very frequently in our interviews with department employees was especially during the public solid waste and yard waste drop-off times, the employees can be greatly delayed trying to get their vehicles out of the yards to go service the public. So that was more of a vehicle comment than an individual people walk-in comment, although there were a couple comments that just by nature of people, for example, coming into water to pay bills or something like that, sometimes people get turned around and are, you know, no, it wasn't a huge deal, I think, especially not compared to the idea of the vehicle traffic up front there, but it came up quite a bit with the people that we interviewed. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Ryan?
All right, so on the next few slides, we'll show you some pictures of what some best practices of new construction or at least modernized construction would look like in a municipal yard setting. For space layout, interior and exterior, the exterior, you notice on the existing conditions, those green turning radiuses on the site right now do not allow for vehicles in 2018 with, that aren't pickups anymore, you have large tractor trucks to get in and out of the spaces. This can create a safety issue many times, doing 10-point turns and not being able to see around corners as you're going around those corners. So a new, a new design would actually try to create more space on the land so that you would have more wide open spaces with more visible areas for the drivers, and you'd be able to maneuver the vehicles more easily in those spaces. Interior spaces, one of the things that we actually talked about in that design charrette when we got together and did the, you know, understanding the needs of the public and the municipal yard employees, one thing that came up frequently, and we actually did some modeling, where you would look at space and what spaces needed to be near each other, and the middle circle always tended to be the inventory, right? So each department would like to have access to the inventory. And one of the ways that new design, they usually would typically have like a main artery walkway down the middle of a building, and each department on each side of that with equal access to centralized large tool area, so you can have shared tools and then also inventory spaces. Then also having co-located offices and crew work spaces, so this would be implementing things like hoteling spaces for crews that are just in and out during the day, so they have a space to post up. It takes less room than having offices or full crew spaces, but they can have individual sections within that and then multi-story buildings. Obviously, the needs of the city as they grow, the space is not going to get any, the acreage that you have isn't getting any bigger, so building up at least in the areas where office and crew spaces are will allow you to create those drive-through areas on the same acreage of land. Meeting and dispatch, and then also training spaces, providing a space where if there is an emergency, where you could have a command center, you can have monthly training meetings where the whole crew can come in and get a certification, whatever it might be, each month. And then organized crew spaces for locker room and restroom facilities. Isaac touched about warehousing, so this would be centralized warehousing. One of the things that we looked at also is, at the current time, the, a lot of the different departments will actually store equipment and tools at other locations because they don't have the room for inventory or tools in a lot of cases. So they may have to start up their day at the municipal yard, punch in, and then drive somewhere else to get the tool, and then go to their project, so, or material that they're storing elsewhere. So having a adequately designed and efficient system with barcoding or QR coding with automated reordering and less carbon paper filling out manually. So right now, you actually have a pretty large indoor heated parking area, but as you saw in those aerial photos, there still are vehicles that are parking outside. One thing that fleet.gov has done a few studies in the last five years or so, where they're saying that if you can actually bring fleet inside that otherwise would be outside in harsh winter conditions, the cost of constructing that parking area over 50 years will pay for itself three times over in vehicle maintenance savings and replace the costs. So you can look into this, fleet.gov if you want to look at those studies. We just referenced that, but we did not include any payback for any of those construction on that, so we didn't want to get into the hypothetical of that. So now are there questions on best practices? Yes?
Why did you use a WB67 as the design vehicle? That's a, that's a semi.
Well, you have to design for the largest, and that'd be the fire truck. So you have to design for that to get around, and that's for bays, lube, wash and fuel. Okay. Other questions?
Would the vehicles be serviced in these areas?
Yes, yes, they, currently they are serviced in the municipal yard.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, so this, and these-
They're in the open areas.
Oh, in the open areas? No, it would still be, so one of the most crucial departments that needs to be near inventory on the inside is the maintenance, vehicle maintenance, because they have the most frequent trips back and forth to inventory. So the intent is to keep that close to inventory on the inside. So before we get into the scenarios, we didn't get into programming and where exactly each department would be, but what we did do is we kept in mind what those best practices are saying. So that is giving people equal access to inventory and maintenance and having adequate space. So as we went through this, we actually did a space layout on the existing location, understood how much each department had, square footage-wise, and then based off of interviews and benchmark information, anticipated what they would need. So most of it came out to about a 20% increase of space. So in all of these hypothetical scenarios, the square footage, the square footage fits onto the different scenarios, right? So the design was built up enough to make sure that that space is there and can fit on a footprint in this, does that make sense? So on the bottom of these, we'll also have the pros and cons, and then there's a total cost of ownership number, so this, keep the existing is option one. So this is the same thing that Isaac showed you earlier, and I'll let you read the pros and cons, I think we know a lot of those based on what we talked about. But the total cost of ownership, when we look at this, and there's a dashboard at the end of the presentation where we'll show you what the different things we looked at, but it's, what are you going to have to spend in either construction costs or first costs, which might be cost for acquiring land and building or demolition, contingency, all these fees upfront? We looked at operating costs or savings associated with increased efficiency?
No, no.
Then capital expenditure costs. So on existing buildings, what should you expect on to replace the systems as they fill, assets as they fill, whether it be carpet, ceiling, roof, HVAC, plumbing, all those types of costs associated in the capital expenditure of the existing facilities? And then we looked at for the, for the existing, and then a couple of the other things, we looked at cost for leasing additional space to meet the needs of the crews. So if you looked at over 30 years, you have $16.3 million for the total cost of ownership, so the capital replacements, any lease costs associated with operating this. The, the, on the capital expenditure though, we only took 10 years of capital expenditure because it wouldn't be fair to take 30 years of capital expenditure because on the new scenarios, you'd start experiencing failures as well. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't sway unfairly towards the other options. So we're saying that at least on the newer options, you'll get a 10-year review on replacing some equipment and carpet and things like that. So option two, so this is using the same location but remodeling and adding in addition. So in the existing location, this area right here has a retaining wall and there's a different elevation on the existing location. So what we're doing in this scenario is we've taken out a portion of the building that was here, it used to go out this way, it was, oops, hit back on the touchscreen there, but this allows for turning radius outside of the shop area. So currently, when vehicles come in and out of the shop, they have to make many turns, and this will allow for that. Now we're picking up additional square footage because we're making two levels here for the admin, so it's a two-story building that can actually have viewing of into the garage, and then we've anticipated parking for all the vehicles within this space. The, there's also some area over here where we've torn down, so this is existing building up to here, and then new facility here, and we've torn down the existing buildings that were right here and put up a new building here. So this, this creates, so you'll have the right turning raises, and then you'll have pass-through for fuel and washing here with adequately sized fueling and washing stations. Right now, about half of the departments don't use the wash rack because they can't fit their vehicles in there, or it's not, there's, it's not fast enough, the line just starts piling up and it's better just to go. And that can actually take years, especially in the wintertime when there's a lot of salt on the roads, that can create rusting and lower the life of the vehicles. So the whole idea is to create enough space, move the inventory and all the like functioning systems, and I'll show you here. So equipment repair, and then there's lube, and there's a tire storage in another, or tire shop here. So the whole idea is that you would move it all into one area, right? So you don't have to go get your tires from across the building and bring them back to the shop and do the lube in a different part and bring it back to the shop. So the other, the other difference here is there's different functions in the middle of the space, and oftentimes vehicles block those, so you actually have to have, find the person whose vehicle it is, get them to move it, find a place to park, perform your work, find them again, they can move it back. So there's a lot of wasted time in motion, so we kind of, as we approached this, we looked at motion studies and step studies and how long it takes to do those types of things. So all of those went into the benefits. So in this scenario, the total cost of ownership is $6 million. So that, obviously there's a construction value associated with doing the demo and the construction, and construction and modernization of the existing building, but the added benefit based on those time in motion studies of the efficiency gains of having centralized or getting rid of those fragmented operations, you will actually save millions of dollars over the 30 years, which pay back on some of those construction costs, whereas you don't get any of those benefits here, so you're really just seeing the upfront costs. This shows you the upfront cost minus the benefits. So over 30 years, it's a better investment for option two than just keeping things as... Yes?
Can you just provide, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, can I?
Yeah.
Can you just provide clarification on whether the assumption is included in the cost of ownership or not?
Yes, yes, so the assumption here is move the public drop-off area to a new site to provide needed space. So right now, the public drop-off area is in this space. So in all of the scenarios two, three, and four, it is moving it to another space, another site for that public drop-off. That's the, that's the only way that we could work out that this acreage would work for the square footage needs, just in our discovery portion. And it also, I think, accounted for maybe 10% of the operational savings. So it's not insignificant, but it by no means is a deciding, you know, the all-encompassing savior of the plan, right? So the, by moving that alone, we figure based off of those interviews, how much time it would save, is, you know, it's a lot of time that they're waiting for their vehicles to exit in and out.
Mr. Chair, you mentioned about the drop-off site, you're looking for, I mean, for another location, right? I mean, it's going to be a space city, right?
Right.
Yeah. So it would be more effective, I mean, in many ways, as the way it is right now, I mean, it would be a lot better, right? It should be.
If it was in a different space, like for example, if it was at a transfer station, then you wouldn't have to take it there on a very frequent basis. So it made sense to us that you would have it at a transfer station because then it would be where it needed to go, and the city employees wouldn't have to take it to where it needed to go, and it's not far from where they're already dropping it off.
So the pre-existing location, when you show the parking vehicle there, so it would be standing, right? The building would be modified, right? To upgrade as it is right now, right? But the building would be there, right?
Yeah, so the building kind of extends out to here now.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
What happens to the salt dome?
This is the salt dome here, it's actually-
Oh, that is?
Yeah. Hypothetically, we didn't do a lot of programming, but one of the things that we've seen is actually, a dome is actually harder to get salt out of than a more rectangular shape because-
Scoop truck.
Yeah.
Quick question, so these, these cost estimates include the price of building the new drop-off location at whatever remote site it is, whether it's a transfer station or somewhere else? That's all, that math is built into here also, right?
So we'll, we'll cover, I'll get into the weeds more, you're going to regret asking that question, I'm going to get way too far into how we came to these conclusions in a little bit, hang with us for a moment.
Thank you.
To be fair, it does or does not?
Oh, sorry, yes, it does, it does, yeah. The time savings, the time and cost savings associated with taking yard waste and public waste drop-off from the current site is included in math.
Our customers are driving it to the yard already anyways, we just take them, make it take to the final resting place.
Right.
Right.
Place we're done with.
And, you know, yeah. So option three is a complete scrape and rebuild on your existing site. So while this portion of the building is the same, just with a modernization of, you know, interior finish, architectural type finishes, and then, you know, plumbing and HVAC, electrical, getting those so that it's a more modern building. electrical, getting those so that it's a more modern building and a place that the employees, you know, are happy and healthy and comfortable. This this design is really, you've torn down everything and constructed a new building. In both of these, we did calculate what it would cost to lease space while construction was going on. So you would you would have to, as you tore down some of the storage buildings over here, you'd have to get storage buildings elsewhere. So we took the fair market value of leased space for warehousing space, storage space in the area and we applied that to the study for the one or two years of construction. And then on option three, you're gonna have to relocate. There'll be some phasing, but you're gonna have to relocate a lot of operation. So there is a hit to some of the operational benefits there as well as a cost upfront for leasing space to continue operation. Really, I mean, it's it's got a lot of the same benefits and cons. The 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 one real big difference is the construction cost on this. So if you see the difference in the total cost of ownership between sixteen point nine and six million, you're looking at an additional ten million dollars to do this project than it is to do the modernization project with some new construction. But but in this in this, you imagine that you would get your perfect scenario, right? You're designed a brand-new building exactly how you want it. You wouldn't have to start with some of the confines that the existing building gives you. So that's that's part of the weighting that you would be taking a look at. The fourth option is a new building on a new site. Now, we initially started going through this with a site in mind. However, we backed away from that and we said, okay, we have hypothetical site. So we have to have, you're gonna get the same benefits as rebuilding on your current site, except you have to buy land associated with it. You there are slightly a few more benefits to being able to construct on a bigger site because you wouldn't have to, you you would have more free range ability on the site itself for traffic through fare. And and the the existing site is more long and narrow. And if you were going to buy the site for your new one, you'd want something that was more appropriate for the location. But in all of these, you know, we're, we wanna make sure that there's, you know, nice drive-through bays for both service. Then you don't have to worry about backing in and out of places. You can drive right into the wash rack and out the wash rack, right into the the lube bay. This one you will actually can through this way. But any of these, you'd be able to drive through, drive through, drive through so that there's just a straight straight motion, not a lot of wasted turns and backing in and out. So now we'll take you through a little bit of the analysis that we did. So where did those numbers come from?
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. And speaking of of the time spent backing in and out and waiting for people to move their vehicles and running left, right, and sideways all over the building, there's a surprising amount of time and resources to be saved by optimizing how departments are laid out, where things are co-located, all the things that Ryan was mentioning. So looking at some of the things that went into our calculations and our analysis, those are some of the things we mentioned, the daily wait time. So I'm gonna go through an example here in a moment, so I won't belabor this slide. But those are some of the things that we're looking at. There's a cost for every mile, both in salary and maintenance and fuel that a public works employee drives. So if we can reduce a couple miles per week times fifty-two weeks a year times however many employees or trucks, that adds up quickly. And so when you start talking about a vehicle just wants to get the oil changed or just wants to get washed and they're waiting five, ten, fifteen minutes a day or per lube or wash, that adds up quickly. Some of the things that come out of that, as you can see, are, well, what does it cost us to do nothing? What can we save by making some changes? What does it look like to replace more or less equipment to renovate versus build new? And then all of that, like with a lot of the factors that Ryan mentioned, real estate, construction costs, et cetera, et cetera, gets us to our total cost of ownership. So another way of looking at that is to take you through one example. So on this, the slides after this are all of the calculations that we did. I just wanna take you step by step through one of them. So in this operational savings example, Ryan, we actually talked quite a bit about the location of inventory. So when we were speaking with people working in the water division, they said, yes, we have to go off-site to another location in order to do certain jobs, whether it's picking up a hydrant or, you know, whatever that particular job requires, which means you have X amount of people jumping in a truck. So they said, well, right now, we're spending thirty minutes per trip, five times a week, with usually one to two crews. So you can see we average it to one and a half crews. And so if you take that out annually, just in the water division alone, we're spending a hundred and ninety-five hours a year trying to go off-site to get equipment or inventory that's needed just to do a task that the city is asking the Department of Public Works to do. So using an average salary and benefits burden rate that we got from the city here, that works out to seventy, over seventy-three hundred dollars a year just for this one inefficiency in one department. Now, all of these on the left-hand side, the green bars, shows you what the total annual operational savings could be across each department. And then the tall bar on the left, the quarter-million-dollar bar is all, that's not all of them added up. That's, there were several things that are happening that are inefficient, that can be fixed, that were common to all of the divisions in Department of Public Works. So that's where you get a savings from every single division. Any questions about how we did our operational savings calculation? So I definitely am not gonna read this one to you. My apologies for the eye chart, but if you want some help getting to sleep at night, this is every single savings calculation that we did. So with all the interviews that we did, you can see it, you know, by section, is it an inventory, is it a parking, is it a movement benefit? And then it's broken up by option. And so this is all gonna be rolled up into a dashboard, as you'll see. But really wanted to be transparent about how we calculated the savings and what the different options afford the city in terms of pros and cons. So one way of visualizing that is, as Ryan was describing to you, what we called the total cost of ownership. As you can see here in option one, existing facility, these are all, this might be a little counterintuitive, but these are all costs that are above zero. And so as Ryan mentioned, the first ten years of deferred capital asset replacement on public works facilities, based on the data that we gathered during the facility condition assessment, is sixteen point three million dollars of of capital asset replacement over the first ten years. Now, as Ryan mentioned, there's no benefits to continuing to do what you're doing. So there's only costs to consider. You look at option two, and as you can see, we're up here, and you'll all show this a little bit more clearly in the next slide, there you appear around a thirty-million-dollar total upfront cost. But then you've got somewhere between twenty and thirty million dollars in benefits to be gained by going with option two, which is where we get the six-million-dollar total.
Over thirty years.
Sorry, thank you. Over thirty, a thirty-year term, that's an important note. So maybe an easier way of looking at this is just showing you what the numbers are instead of graphs that are up and down and sideways. So as I mentioned, with option one, there's no construction cost because you're not building anything new. There's no real estate value cost because you're not acquiring new land. We factored it, as Ryan mentioned, based on a reasonable industry standard rates for this area with an assumed amount of space needs that we gathered from interviewing the employees. You could look at spending over ten million dollars over thirty years in leased space costs to be able to accomplish the functions that the Department of Public Works needs to do to serve the city. And then the TI cost is tenant improvements. So like any other building, just because it's leased space doesn't mean you don't have to take care of it. So whether you do it or you pay someone to do it, there's tenant improvement costs associated with that leased space. And then this bottom or second from the bottom line, the total deferred capital expenditure over ten years is five and a half million dollars. So one thing I I wanna point out is that this sixteen point two-six, this sixteen point three-million-dollar figure, another way to think about that is that that's only the first ten years. Well, we know, because we already did the data analysis on a thirty-year term for all of the facilities in the city, that it's actually closer to about eleven million dollars in deferred capital asset replacement over the thirty-year term. As Ryan pointed out, it's not, it wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison to to do that second set of twenty years of capital asset replacement. So we keep it ten. It's just worth mentioning that it's not really sixteen point three. It's actually quite a bit more to do nothing. The option two we've highlighted because, as Ryan mentioned, it has the lowest total cost of ownership, meaning less upfront costs and and greatest amount of benefits for the money. And so as you can see, and these construction costs are just based on current construction costs for this type of building and the amounts of square feet that we ascertained the city needs based on the functions that are going on there and what we learned from the employees. Again, there's some lease costs, as Ryan mentioned, associated with phasing construction because you can't just stop work to build a new building or to renovate. And then, as you can see, there's building, building residual value, which has to do with how much, essentially, how much value the property is to the city after the thirty-year term gets added into there. And then the total operating benefits, as you can see, is around seventeen million dollars for options two, three, and four, because really, the city is able to achieve much of the same operating sa- operational savings by making the changes that Ryan mentioned in options two, three, and four, with slight variations based on, as he mentioned, you have an ideal parcel of land that you buy or you're building brand-new so you can gain some squeak in some savings here or there. So the bottom line is that while option three does involve a brand-new shining building without purchasing real estate, the upfront costs are significantly, as you can see, higher than just renovating and having an addition. And then option four with building new on a new site, of course, gives you the opportunity to customize the facility, what it looks like, how it's laid out and and what happens there. But of course, it's a much higher construction cost than than land acquisition cost. Any questions about this before I continue? Yes, sir?
The ten point two million for lease costs for additional space needs. We're not leasing that space now. You're saying this is space we might need to lease based on.
Exactly. So based on the the need there, this, the current space shortage, and then looking at what what is needed down the road with population growth and vehicles changing and just the, you know, the needs of the department and storage space and all that kind of thing. If if you wanted to stay on the same site, that's the amount of money that you could spend to lease space that's needed by the city to do its job.
And did you look at anything else? For example, the water department, maybe instead of reporting to the main building, they report to a different location. They're by their hydrants already, they're by on their pipe already.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, we had this exact conversation with multiple departments around multiple issues. And this is why it's so critical to talk to the people working there. Because then you find out that, well, I wish the only problem they had is that the hydrants are over here and their work is over here. But there's at least two sites that they have to go to around the city to pick up items to do their work. And the other problem is with that is that then you get into the issue of the vehicles. And where are they gassing up before they leave for the day? Are they getting wa- where are they getting washed at the end of the day? So it, well, it could solve one problem to have the entire water department report over here instead of the municipal yard building. It might create two or three other problems in terms of the vehicles and and inventory. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And what other facilities did you assume that DPW can use for now? So they probably have their reservoir.
Yeah, so they've got storage there. I don't know off the top of my head. There were, yes, so the Morgan Yard Waste and then the storage facility at Reservoir Park. And then I believe there was one other garage storage somewhere.
Morgan, yeah.
Okay. So there's a, they're storing not only inventory, but there's also sometimes when they're parking vehicles there, where they'll take a regular-sized truck, drive it to a location where they've got a big truck stored, get in the big trucks and then go do the job, come back at the end of the day, switch out the vehicles. That kind of scenario plays out.
There's another building we often forget that the city owns. It's on the end of a hundredth and Maple. We rent it out to the woodworking club for a dollar a month. And that lease, I think, is up in early twenty-twenty's. But there is another.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Twenty-twenty-five, there is another property technically we own.
I I don't wanna offend the woodworking aficionados, but from my perspective, everything's on the table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just waiting for the eyes.
What do they pay for money?
Thanks, buddy.
So.
It's a possibility.
One thing that I wanna talk about, and I'm gonna hand it over to to Nick, who's gonna talk about some recommended next steps. One thing I wanna talk about is, and pardon me for for being blunt, but I I don't think you can afford to kick the can down the road. So as you can see here in a bright yellow box, based on the current expenditures that are forecasted in the facility condition assessment, if you wait five years, that's two point seven more million dollars that you haven't avoided spending. If you wait five years, that's due to inflation on the proposed construction costs, almost four million more dollars. And then, as you can see, if you wait five years, that's three million dollars of that operational savings that you're not gaining. And what that works out to, you know, you could say to yourself, wow, we won't wait five, we'll wait two. Well, you know, if you just do some, if you average it out, that's almost two million dollars a year that you're losing and or not saving by failing to make a decision as quickly as you can. So the things that contribute to that are are just some of the things that I've talked about. There's already asset replacement on a schedule that needs to go on a schedule. And that is gonna continue to cost the city money. Never mind the fact that the longer those assets wait to be replaced, the more expensive it becomes to respond to work orders, to service the equipment. And the equipment isn't working as well, doing its job contributes to a lot of things. I touched briefly on inflation and interest rate increases. Those are obviously outside of everyone's control, but they're a very real factor when you start talking about millions of dollars. That creeps up quickly when you wait. Real estate land value increases really is only a factor if you decide to build new on a new site or do some sort of hybrid version. It's a factor nonetheless. And then, as you can see there, labor rates get more expensive, parts get more expensive, materials get more expensive, and then you continue to lose the operational benefits that you could gain by rectifying the current situation. So I just implore you, history doesn't build buildings, so I don't think I have anything to gain from this. I implore you to make a decision and 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 help. You know, Dave's department is outstanding. Those people are working their tails off with limited resources, limited space, and they're keeping the city up. They really are. One of the things that came out in the charrette, I don't know if Ryan touched on it already, is there there, every single thing that happens in the city is supported by the Department of Public Works. And yet, they remain behind the scenes. So I just ask you to consider that. And Nick, come on up and talk about the fluffy stuff.
Well, thanks, Isaac and Ryan, for going through. It's a lot of information. Obviously, we really appreciate Rebecca and Pete and and Dave's work on this as well because getting those interviews and and as Isaac just said, we see a lot of cities. We see a lot of operational teams. And I think you should be really proud of the team that you have and the efficiencies that you run at. If you look at the staffing levels that you're running at today versus five and ten years ago, it's significantly lower. So I think you you should be applauded for that and 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 the whole city should be proud of that. One of the things that kind of struck us and a lot of us coming out of meetings with Dave, we're kind of glad that that we don't hit his job because it can be stressful at times, but I think it touches municipal operations, really touches all five goals that are there. And I think, as Isaac said, we're not really here to recommend, you know, hey, you gotta go build a new building. It's really your call, you know? So I think you need to maybe consider that. So we we came up with with some next steps that really would kind of identify. And then we know this may be a little bit of a process, but coming up with a little bit of a definition around what that would look like based on, you know, what the what the council would recommend and then go into some level of owner representation and design to come up with the concepts to to do that down the road. So that's really where we wanted to end it and just, I guess, open it up for any any final questions or comments.
Question I have is, in scenarios two, three, and four, is redoing the transfer station part of it, since you're gonna be relocating the citizen drop-off area? And part of the study that was done previously indicates transfer station isn't horrible. Were there, does any of any of those options take that into consideration?
Yes and no. So we had quite a bit of conversation with Pete, Rebecca, and Dave around the transfer station for this exact reason you mentioned. It's an assumption on options two, three, and four that public drop-off stops happening at the current location. The good news is there's a lot of viable options. So I think one of the great ideas that Dave brought up is figuring out a way incrementally to bring a public drop-off to the current transfer station by de-conflicting times and dates of drop-off, for example. It's a pretty busy location and one of the main concerns brought up by Pete, Rebecca, and Dave is safety, of course. You don't wanna have all these huge dump trucks mixing with people trying to drop off their yard waste. So you have to deconflict. So you have to de-conflict by time and space. Um, I, and, you know, stop me if I'm not answering your question, did we come up with a plan to replace the transfer station? No. Um, have we talked about it quite a bit and looked at what that could look like and are there ultimate locations informally, behind the scenes? Yeah, we've talked about that because it, it, it's gonna be a critical component moving forward. As Ryan mentioned, the operational savings associated with relocating the current public drop-off accounts for ten percent of the overall operational savings. So on the one hand, the, the gains from freeing up that space conceptually are large, but the monetary costs, it's, it's one-tenth of what you could save compared to everything else that we're talking about implementing.
Okay, the savings are calculated in here already, correct?
Yes.
But the infrastructure cost for relocating the drop-off point is not, correct?
There's no new construction costs associated.
Okay, so we have to add in, in these scenarios, the cost of reconfiguring off-site someplace, a, an area for our citizens to drop off, what they drop off at the yard now.
Yes, sir, and I, you know, I just realized, I ran on and didn't do a good job of describing this, but there's no in-low-cost solutions as well, such as, uh, moving it to Morgan or changing the time, you know, so.
One clarifier.
Yes, there's no transfer station construction costs in here.
So anything we do, we have to take into consideration?
And I think that's a very significant consideration, because who in the city wants to live across the street or near a transfer station? I mean, a lot of people here own these houses, probably bought it after that transportation was already there, so now you're gonna be introducing it, and you wanna find a place that's more centrally located, I would think, than a hundred-sixteenth and Morgan. Couple ideas come off the top of my head. Um, but, um, I think that's also a major hurdle that we'd have to overcome.
And then likewise on option four, um, you indicated that, uh, site acquisition was part of your cost. What if it was, uh, a new building was built on city-owned land?
Uh, that's also a possibility. I think one of the limitations of time that we ran into is we're gonna have ten options.
Yeah, oh, I understand that. I just wanna understand, so when I'm looking at this, um, if we decided to go that route and build it on a piece of city-owned land, we would deduct an amount off of here.
Absolutely, option four could become more attractive really quickly.
Okay. And obviously staff knows what those figures, what that figure is, um, that would be taken out?
Uh, right, or we can get it to them. I mean, it's based, that is based off of, as Ryan mentioned, it's a hypothetical site, so it's not an actual living parcel of land here in the city.
Right, understand.
The cost per square foot, we can certainly share back to them, so as they're evaluating.
Yeah, just like an old site acquisition cost.
It, it's on there, actually, it's a real estate value cost, one point three.
One point three million?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And I think that was for twelve acres.
I'd have to look at it again.
From a cost-benefit analysis, I would think option three becomes an obsolete option, wouldn't it? I mean, all you're getting with option three is a prettier, newer-looking building. What, what are you getting for the ten million?
What's the question about the ten million?
What, what do you get for the extra ten million over option two?
Yeah, I know.
That's what I mean, I mean, process of elimination, we'd almost wanna just scrap three.
Yeah.
And option four, I can't think of a nine-acre-plus site. That wouldn't be better used for something else.
Well, I, I wouldn't scrap anything right now. I just wanna keep, I wanna keep everything on the table and explore it all. Right, uh, doing nothing is, is not an option. Uh, but, you know, remodeling, I assume it's all new roofs on all of the buildings?
Sure, that would, of course, get into what the design is, and, you know, we know some of the roofing is more recent than others there, but, but, yes, for everything that needs to be replaced, option two ought to be replaced.
Because I, you know, I don't wanna go into something like option two, and then five years from now, have some more remodeling work or additional maintenance work that's gotta be done. I look at it and say, we do this and we're, we're, should be set for a number of years outside of routine normal maintenance.
And approximately, I think, uh, fifth or sixth of the square footage is brand-new in option two.
Yeah.
And then the garage area, um, a lot of the construction costs, it's a major modernization. So i- it's doing the interiors, you know, new carpets, uh, walls.
Cranes, all of that.
Yeah, so, um, and then, um, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, um, creating, you know, doing proper commissioning on it, so test and balance to make sure. One of the issues that continually came up is there can be some dangerous times where the pressure's so off in the building, you know, the door slams so hard, you could lose a limb, you know? So making sure that all of that, and you get the proper ventilation so that when there's vehicles idling, and actually having exhaust systems that you can actually hook right up to the vehicles and.
Okay, so it takes care of all of those issues?
Yeah.
And we are, we are not going to have to really worry about anything major going on there for a number of years.
Correct.
Okay.
What about environmental cost, even within a remodel, you're gonna have asbestos, lead, that's an old building. Did you consider any contingencies for environmental?
Yeah, I put in, I, I put in approximately twenty percent contingency on the construction cost too, just for that reason.
Sure.
Um, yeah, there's, we're gonna run into asbestos, I imagine.
Yeah.
Floor ceilings and walls and insulation, so.
And with the new building, selling the old site, you're gonna have fuel cleanup, you're gonna have all that stuff, was that considered in the new building?
Yes, there's, there's contingencies on all of those as well. You'll see, I, it, basically what I did is I started, um, uh, why am I blanking on the city down the road? Yeah, not many falls, I started with their cost per square foot, um, applied it to your square foot, escalated the construction costs, and then they had certain things, uh, like vehicle lifts and things like that, that weren't associated with their cost, so I got the, their actual costs for those, added those in, um, to match what your, your needs would be, and then, um, and then put in the general conditions and the contingencies and things like that for, uh, the building of your age and what I expected to see as far as risks, um, for those types of things. So you'll, you'll see, I mean, it's, it's a significant project cost for a modernization in there, um, you know, that's not pennies.
Any more, else have any questions? Call it a me.
Where do we go from here? What's the next step?
Well, I think we have to have additional meetings and start, I think, committee in the whole and, and determine what direction we wanna go, and Rebecca, maybe you can set something up for January and have a, have a meeting in Jan, beginning of January so that we can start analyzing this information and determining what our direction is.
And Mr. McKinstry, also, yeah, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, yeah, yeah, you guys are definitely worth what we paid for you, so, thank you for that, this is great, this is exactly what I, what we need to know, I think, in laying out our options for us.
Yeah, I, I'd like to get some cost estimates for, um, the transfer station.
Yes.
What we're gonna have to, what that's gonna do, because when we analyze this, we're gonna want that figure.
Yeah, I think we can.
And potential locations, I think that's.
Yeah, exactly.
Those two are probably the two biggest issues to sort first.
So, so, so you're talking about, Mr. Chair, retain the transfer stations right at the site.
Well, we don't know that yet.
Well, I mean, 'cause I have ideas. Right where we are, the Lloyd and, and the, uh, main entrance right now, the exiting, right now, the way it is on, on McGeech there, to me, I mean, we can divert that and keep it right towards the face of Lloyd Road, that between the railroad and the, uh.
Well, the transfer station isn't there, transfer station's up.
Well, I mean, because eventually the one on a hundred-sixteen is, it'd be a goner, I'll be honest with you.
There's another one.
There'll be a goner, eventually, in time.
Good news on that is, we did do some preliminary sketch-ups on that for this, that the team has, so you, you have partially what you need already on that, so, and using best practices on transfer stations as well, um, uh, where you have the, the long-term driveways for queuing and all those types of things where, and, and we actually kind of did a space analysis to see if the existing site could fit some of those best practices in there, so you've got that as well.
Next. Time for council meeting, so move me adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, polls, we are adjourned.